Good afternoon, everybody. It is Thursday, April 6, 2023 at 6:00 PM, and I'll call to order the Freetown Board Selectment Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on YouTube. This meeting is also, in addition to being in person, is also on Zoom. So I'm going to read the Governor's order. The meeting will be available in person for in-person attendance and on Zoom on March 29, 2023. Governor Haley signed-
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
It's okay, you're okay.
Governor Haley signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the Open Meeting Law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at the meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Freetown Board Selectmen will be conducted in person as well as via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Freetown's website, FreetownMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the link and entering in the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording transcript, other comprehensive records of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay? So we will be going into executive session and then returning back into open session. Therefore, I'm going to say the reasons why we're going to executive session, but just to let everyone know on Zoom that you will be kicked out of the meeting and then you can come back in after we get out of the executive session. So we'll be going to executive session for the following reasons: Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, "To discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares and I do between the roses and townware." Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, "To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Freetown Police Association because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the public position of the pub-" Sorry, the bargaining position of the public body in the chair, so declares I do. And Master General Law, Section 21A1, "To discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual." So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
One minute, Luanne needs to do roll call.
You have to roll call.
Or I can do it.
No, this one should have said, no, this one should have said three. Three is the same, yep.
This is okay.
That's one, yeah, they're fine. Yeah, the same one.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, we're now in executive session. All right, so now we're back in open session. So the item four is to reorganize the Board of Selectmen, choose a chairman, Personnel Board Chair, and Parks Commissioner Chair. So I guess I'll just start this conversation. I would like to remain Chair. Now, I know, you know, currently, Carlos, you're both Personnel and Parks Commissioner. I was losing the Board of Health. You know, I think, I mean, it seems like you've been, I don't know. This is my take-
Yep.
Is that, you know, the, I know you've been doing a lot of the interviews. If you, if you're enjoying that and you want to go down, continue doing that, I know it's a lot of work. You know, I think it would make more sense to give Jared Parks a rec, but I guess what are your, what's your take on this?
So I thought about this and I was going to propose to the board that we punt this for a month or two. Reason being is this, and this is why I say this. Right now, there's so many, right now, we're working, we're redoing the leases for all the different organizations, from field hockey, soccer, softball, anything else. There's so much at play right now with communications and going back and forth that I would like to see that through. It should be more than a month before that's done with. As far as Personnel, I look at that, we started the whole thing of reviewing all the policy procedures and it was just not there yet. So that's why I was saying it could be punted for another month or two. There's no precedent, there's no law saying that we have to change it today. It's more of a tradition than anything else.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't-
No, no.
You know, I think that right now, it's kind of like saying, okay, Trevor's in charge of this and you're having two things. Like, it kind of makes sense. And not for nothing, you know, you're very involved with all those organizations. So it might be better from an ethics standpoint for me to just take it over and see it through on that point. You know, I'm obviously going to be, not that you're not being fair and impartial on it, you know, don't take that the wrong way. I'm just saying that. So I think from, from this point, it'll be easy for me to get caught up on what you've worked on and continue to see it through. So I mean, that's just how I feel. And I think that, you know, Trevor's done a good job with Chairman, so I know technically it's supposed to be me who takes it over. But I'd rather have him, I'd rather have him stay. I think he does a great job, so, and as you do too, right? Like, it's not-
Yeah. No, no, there's no doubt that we're, I believe we're an effective board, right? Across the board, right? I just, in my head, I'm like, you know, I like to finish what I start. You know, and I'm so close with the Parks Rec stuff. That's less than a month away. We're just waiting for paperwork to be finished and it's done. Right? Punted for another month at a minimal solves the issue of me trying to, spend a year in negotiations and a year in talking and everything else.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, is, I mean, council will tell you, you think something's going to be done and then next thing you know, one little thing happens and it continues on.
I know what you're saying. Sure, no, I get it.
The way I look at it, it's like, yeah, exactly. It's like, it's, it's, nothing's ever going to get done, right? Whenever you solve one problem, there's two more that pop up. It's, it's like-
It's the nature of the game.
So I think it's just got to be, it's, there's never going to be that clean takeaway spot that like, okay, now's the time. So I just feel like right now with the reorganization, it kind of makes sense to just do it here and now, so.
Yeah, no, it's, this is why we're bored. Yeah. That's not my opinion, it's not my decision, it's our decision.
Yeah.
So-
And I'm trying to be fair for everyone, right? You know, and it's because it's, you know-
I get it, I completely get it.
And I think we did get some advice from council here. So I think we can all, we can all vote on this as one article, you know, or sorry, one, one motion.
Because-
Just because there's no financial incentive to any of the individual positions, just to make that clear. Because I know that, you know, sometimes we've been splitting up, you know, who can vote, who can appoint? You can't appoint yourself to a board, things of that nature. I just want to make that clear that we got. All right, so I guess, I think we should go forward with this. I'm going to propose a motion, I'll entertain a motion to reorganize the board to have myself as chairman, Carlos Lopes as Personnel Board Chair, and Jared Zager as Parks and Commission Chair.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. Okay, so now moving on to item five. This is executive session minutes from 4 to-
Sorry, we do a roll call.
Oh, sorry. Good catch.
Yes.
Good catch.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, because we're in Zoom.
Right, but all the, all the board members are present. Roll call, roll call is only necessary if a member of the board is, is participating remotely.
Which makes sense, because generally when we are in Zoom, that is the case.
Right.
Right?
But I mean, there's no downside to doing roll call votes.
I say we do it just to, just to be safe.
There is no downside, it clarifies. But just for your edification, it is a requirement that if a board member is appearing remotely, then all votes-
Which makes sense, right? That makes sense, I think. I'd rather just do them. We're in the, we're in the flow of doing them anyways.
If you're in the habit, it's not a bad habit.
Okay. It probably makes taking the minutes easier too, you know?
That was my thought.
Yeah. All right, so we did do a roll call on that one. I think we're good, right?
Yes.
So now, agenda item five. This is executive session minutes from 4 to 2023. So I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 4 to 2023.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Now we have open session minutes from 3/20/2023, 3/22/2023, and 4 to 2023. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from those dates.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, now we have a presentation from Town Council on social media best practices and responsibilities of the town, elected officials slash and board and committee members. Official members. All right, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Rich, KP Law, town, longtime Town Council. Happy to be here, thank you for having me. As we know, town boards, committees, and commissions are governed by a number of statutes known as sunshine laws. You have the Public Records Law, Open Meeting Law, and Conflict of Interest Law. And the purpose of the Open Meeting Law is to promote openness in government, to pull aside any shroud of secrecy in terms of the operation of government. The Public Records Law allows the public access to records created by, by town boards, committees, and commissions by, by public bodies, by the town in general. And it needs to be remembered that public records are records in any form, any material, anything created by the board, be it a photograph, a video recording if requested, and a written document in whatever form it may, may appear in. The law has finally caught up to email and electronic media and the Attorney General has issued guidance and the Secretary of the Commonwealth and the supervisor of public records have weighed in. So it needs to be remembered that any deliberation among a public body, be it the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, any constituted, however constituted, public body or subcommittee thereof is subject to the Open Meeting Law. So deliberation amongst a quorum of a, of a public body or amongst a subcommittee of a public body, which would be two or more, one individual, you could talk to yourself, you wouldn't be violating the Open Meeting Law, you would not be a, a subcommittee acting on your own. But to the extent that you're meeting with other members of a subcommittee or other members of your body that constitutes a quorum, those deliberations must occur at a properly posted open meeting. Executive sessions are allowable, subject to the allowable executive session purposes. When it comes to social media, social media has posed a challenge for, for many, many officials on both elected and appointed boards because of the prevalence of social media, various, various available platforms of social media. It needs to be remembered that individuals, when acting in their official capacity, still are imbued with the authority of that position. Notwithstanding the fact that one individual of a board can't act on behalf of that board or can only act through a vote of that board and a majority vote or a delegation of authority to the extent that that's allowable. But when, when an individual cloaks themselves in the authority of their position, it happens in a number of instances and it really becomes an issue on the social media when an individual weighs in by social media or gets involved in email or text message exchanges in their official capacity. As opposed, obviously, each of you function as individuals as well. You don't give up your free speech rights when you become a member of a public body. So each member of the Board of Selectmen maintains their, their authority and certainly that becomes an issue during election time. You, you campaign for yourself and that's, that's your individual expression. But when you're acting as a member of a board and that goes to a member of any board, any public body of the town, if you participate or act on a social media website or you conduct yourself on social media, hosting, hosting a page or conducting a blog, if you do that in a manner that is, is within the authority of your position and especially if you, if you address it through your official title, the, the production of that, that blog or that Facebook page or those emails or Instagrams or any, any of the social media platforms that are available, those items can become subject to the Public Records Law because they are the creation of a document, a record, some record, be it photographic, videographic, text, the very, the very images on a Facebook page can be deemed a public record. So, and, and the Attorney General, the Inspector General rather, issued a, issued a guidance as well. There's, there's, there's a guidance document that has been issued. It was issued in, in January of this year in, in which this, this, this very issue is discussed, stating, "All, all public boards receive and generate public records in the regular course of business. You also generate public records when you operate in your official capacity as a public board member. If you communicate with another individual in your official capacity or exchange information about matters under your board's purview. For instance, you may create a public record even if you use your personal email, voicemail, or video recording to transmit that information. A common misperception exists that communications on personal email accounts or via text messages are not subject to Public Records Law. This is incorrect as all board-related communications are subject to public disclosure." And that is consistent with the, with further guidance that has been given by the Attorney General, which, which I'll read as well. This is on the Attorney General's website, Frequently Asked Questions. "May members of a public body communicate with the public through social media platforms such as Facebook, Twitter, and webpages?" The statement, "Yes, members of public bodies may communicate with members of the public through any social media platform. However, members of public bodies must be careful not to engage in deliberation with other members of the public body through such communications. If a member of a public body communicates directly with a quorum of the public body over social media platforms such as Facebook or Twitter, that communication may violate the Open Meeting Law. Public body members should proceed with caution when communicating via these platforms." So it's a twofold issue. There's, again, the Open Meeting Law issue that we spoke about right from the start. So communication, and this, this happens and it's, it's, I want to call it a trap for the unwary. It's, it's very easy when you see something on Facebook to respond and you don't always know, you don't always look to see if, who, who else is on that page. And you could wind up in a situation where there's a majority of your board taking part in this, this Facebook discussion or some other social media platform, a Twitter communication. And you could result in a situation where, in fact, there is a discussion amongst a majority resulting in a possible meeting law violation because that discussion could be deemed a deliberation. And the corollary to that is these communications, once put down on, on this, this social media platform, themselves can then become public records and are subject to retention under the Public Records Retention Schedule and they're subject to potential disclosure issues because if somebody makes a request for those records, those records could be subject to the disclosure requirements. And the concern comes up when board members, and again, this is not just the select board, but any public body members using their private email, if their private email is communicating on public matters, town matters. Now, obviously, communications with council would be privileged. But if you're communicating generally, the concern is, I don't think anybody wants to have the town, when it receives a public records request, say to you, all right, we now need to look through your personal emails and determine what is public record and what is not.
That's exactly my question, right? So-
And feel free to jump in, I, I don't mean to just be talking.
My, my attorney told me, as soon as I got elected, don't use Facebook, period, right? For this exact reason. Because he sued somebody and, and got, was sitting on this board, actually. And so, and all their emails became discoverable. They were using their work email to communicate, became discoverable, and that turned into a real mess for this person. So I, I don't use Facebook at all. I only use the town. If I get a message on Facebook, I say, please, you know, if I do check them, I deleted the app, so totally avoid the issue. But if I do receive them, I say, please, contact me at TrevorTMatthews@FreetownMA.gov.
You can't stop someone from reaching out to you.
Yeah.
But I think it's important to recognize that when they reach out to you as, as a selectman and they say, you know, "Selectman, I have a question", and you respond as a selectman, even though, again, you, you have to act through your board. But the fact that you responded an official matter on a, a question that came to you as a board member, that communication becomes a public record and it is subject to retention. The reality is you're supposed to provide a copy of that to the town clerk so it can be retained as a record of the town. If you don't and somebody makes a public records request, you know, as the selectman just mentioned, we would be, we would, we would be required because you can't hide behind your, your private email address and say, "It's private." And I've had, I've had instances, even vendors. You can't use a vendor to hide public records. Say, "Well, that went to the consultant that we hired. The consultant has those records and therefore we can't access them." The Attorney General will take action. I've had that happen and, and they will go after that, that consultant, say, "You got to give up those records." But back to your private email address, if you're using that private email and a request comes in for public records and you refuse, you're, you're now violating the, the, the Public Records Law. There are implications for the town, there are implications for you individually. And again, it can result in a situation where the town would have to obtain possibly your hard drive, even if you try to delete messages, do a forensic analysis of your hard drive and find those emails, which would entail going through your private emails-
And that's, that's the problem, right?
-to separate between the two because you don't have a filter between the two at that point.
Exactly.
And my, one of my other questions has always been with, I'm so careful about what I post social media related because I don't want people to think I'm, which way I'm leaning. And I say people, I mean Carlos or Trevor, right? Because if we have to vote on something and someone asks a question or I pose something and they know which way I'm leaning, can that, is, is that an issue? Right? Like, if, if we're all having to vote on whether this is the color blue or not and I post something about it saying that I think it's the color blue, then are, am I causing an issue? Right? Because now they know how I feel about a subject before we deliberate on it in public forum.
You, you come to the board with, any, any member of a public body comes to that public body or the board with their opinions. You're not expected to leave your opinions at the door when you come in. You ran on a particular platform, somebody knows that's what you stand for. And as an individual, you could say, "I, I stand for blue and not green", to use that, the color analogy. The, the issue is if you on a Facebook page say, "I'm in favor of blue" and, and Selectman Lopes says, "I'm in favor of green", you just had a deliberation between two-thirds of, of the Board of Selectmen and that could be, that constituted deliberation if the color issue is an issue before the board.
Yeah.
And I know we're using-
Something ridiculous, but just to get the point across.
But it's a good, it's a good, it's a good point of discussion. If you're doing it on your own and there's no, there's no follow-up, nobody else, if, if you do it on your own Facebook page and neither of your, your colleagues jump in, it's not a deliberation, it's you saying it on your own.
Yeah.
But you need to be careful because you don't, you don't, you can't control the next person's response. That's why when I, when I speak to clients, I always remember, remind them, the, the biggest enemy in communications is the "respond to all" button on emails. And, and we're, we're all guilty of it. I've, I've done it involuntarily, hit the "respond to all", and then you look and say, "Oh, my gosh, the entire board is on here. I just sent a communication." Now, I can do that because I'm not a member of the board. I'm not subject to the meeting law. But the problem is you get a communication from one of us and then, and then one of you responds and then that, that triggers a, a potential violation because that's a communication among the board. So that's why what we recommend, if, if, say, the interim town administrator is sending communication to the board, we actually recommend that, that you BCC. So that way, you, you, you don't, you can't communicate back. You make sure that there's kind of that block. I also always recommend that when the town administrator or the, or the administrative assistants of the board, when, when, when they send you information, and obviously they have to send you information, that it's for informational purposes only and you can add a line at the bottom, "For informational purposes only, please do not respond", because they can send you information that would then be discussed at a properly posted open meeting. But the issue is when you respond and you start saying, "Well, that's an interesting report, I think this. No, I think that, that's a deliberation." So that, that's, that starts with an email. It's trickier with Facebook and with other social media because it's out there among the public and you have this, this desire to communicate with the public, this desire to make the public aware of your position on a, on a pressing matter. You have the ability to express your own opinion, but, but if all three of you are, are members of, of another board or body, if all of them respond, then you have the potential that that represents a deliberation. It's a big challenge in our world right now because of the proliferation of social media, which operates in a, in a different sphere than the Open Meeting Law. The Open Meeting Law wants everything to happen at this table and not out in, in the netherworld of social media. Social media gets away from that transparency because the public doesn't know when you're going to be communicating, doesn't know when these deliberations are going to occur, can't see them unfolding. They see what's happening here because you posted an agenda that includes the time and place of, of the, of the meeting, the date, time, and place, and the subject matters that anybody can read and understand. They say, "Okay, I know they're going to be discussing this. I want to be here and I want to hear that discussion and I can understand what they're going to discuss." When you do it through social media, nobody, nobody is certain what's going to be discussed and, and they, they can't hear that discussion. So they don't know, "I should have tuned in to that blog or I should have gotten on that Facebook page or I don't have Facebook and so I have no way of accessing this." So it, it is, it is a trap for the unwary because it seems like it's so available, it's easily accessed and, and it's a method of communication. And I think of it for my kids, they communicate much more than I do.
All right, well, how about this? How about I, we all know each other, it's a small town. I say happy birthday to somebody, Jared says happy birthday to somebody. Is that an issue? I say happy birthday to somebody, Jared says happy birthday to somebody. Is that an issue?
There's a specific.
Town information.
There's a specific exemption under the open meeting law for um social, social gatherings. If you all want to go to a Red Sox game or a local, a local baseball game together, you can do that. As long as you don't discuss town business. Your birthday is not town business and you can't deliberate on it.
Yeah.
Sure, it's a fact.
How about after a town, like today's meeting, right? And we post the next day after it's already been publicly available, we discuss what was discussed at the meeting. Any issue with that?
Well, again, you.
No opinions, just what was stated in the meeting. Here's what the information is.
That that, those are the minutes, those are the minutes of a meeting. And so that 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 does go into into a public record, you you're required to maintain minutes of the meeting. But again, your your meeting is is subject to the four corners of your agenda. Except for matters that come up that could not be reasonably anticipated by the chair within forty eight hours. So if somebody rushes in today and says, uh, we just got a million dollar grant, we didn't know we were going to get it. And we need, we needed the board to vote and sign on it right now. Um, you didn't know about that. I don't think anybody's, and and they tell you, if you don't sign it tonight, it expires at at midnight. You're going to sign that.
Yeah, I think I think what he's asking though is, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what he's saying is is if like, meeting has been closed.
Right.
Like if we were to talk about what happened at that meeting, is that a violation of the open meeting?
Right, it's already, it's been, meeting's been held, it's a, it's already open public information, already out in the the universe out there.
It is, right?
We've all, we've all decided blue is blue and that's what.
Once the meeting is adjourned, once you voted that blue is blue and the meeting is adjourned, you can't then continue that discussion.
Yeah, it has to be stopped at that point.
You can't cure it by simply posting that post-meeting discussion the next day. So adjournment, it's over, you can have, you could say niceties, hey, how do you like that chocolate cake?
Yeah.
But because that's not something within your your jurisdiction, but you can't go back to the 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 colored debate that you just had.
Oh, right.
At the meeting.
Yeah.
So e- e- even even though you're still sitting here and the members of the public are still here. But once you've adjourned that meeting, the meeting's over and and you have to cease. And I've had situations where uh boards have adjourned the meeting, someone comes up and the board engages a discussion. Someone else overhears that and and they bring a a complaint. They say the meeting was adjourned and they continued to to discuss. I left the meeting, I didn't know they were going to continue to discuss that, even though you posted it um afterwards. I didn't know you were going to have that discussion, I didn't get to watch that discussion.
Yep.
I didn't get to hear that discussion.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Or give input to it.
Yeah. So again, I think the takeaway, um, I can't tell you not to use social media. I don't use social media myself, but I and and for a number of reasons. And I do worry very much, I again, as public officials, special elected officials. You use various platforms for your campaign purposes, that's separate.
Yep.
That's that's individual, but when you're acting as a board member, you should be very careful when using social media. Not to portray yourself as acting in your official capacity. When you do that, you again, run the risk, you you run potential liability issues if you if you're acting beyond the scope of your authority. So if you're taking positions as a as a a board member that are outside of your own board, that that could uh exceed your authority. There there are concerns with that, but the concern with with respect to what we're discussing today is that uh from the public records perspective. You're create, you're you're potentially creating a public record that is um uh subject to mandatory disclosure as a public record. You have a duty to provide that public record to the town clerk and it has to be preserved. And so of course you may be saying things on Facebook or Twitter that you may not want to have preserved as a public record. But also uh you you may be taking positions that uh that that then become discoverable through a public records request. And uh you you may be essentially converting your private life, your private Facebook page, your private Twitter account. Um, your private email to being subject to review from a public records.
And that's all the messages you've ever sent.
All the messages you ever sent, every, and texts are interesting, because texts can disappear. And uh they 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 can be found, they don't, they don't necessarily disappear forever, they become more difficult. But that's something you need to think about is, the more difficult it is to discover, the more deeply the town or or an attorney. Or the attorney general uh enforcing under the supervisor of public records will dig. And they will obtain your hard drive, they will obtain your private records to go through to determine what is public, what is not. And you probably don't want that scrutiny, not that I'm saying anybody's doing anything wrong otherwise. But we all have private lives and we like to separate our private life from our public life. And when you mix those, you run the risk that your 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 private communications will become public or at least be searchable. Because they they have, they have been imbued with with some public uh perception. And if you have one email in there and and there's a public records request and you you either refuse to give it or you can't find it. Uh, there's there's the potential for a violation of the open meeting law and the public records.
We obviously have a bunch of all the people here, I think everyone here actually does something for some capacity in the town. Uh, does anyone else have any questions? Because we're we're all firing at questions at him, but I wasn't sure.
And I'm I'm happy to to answer questions and you don't need to just listen to me.
Respond to nobody.
I hope that, I hope that means that it was a fairly clear.
No, that was, no, that was very helpful.
Communication.
You know, it's it's a strange time, it's a lot of new kind of, who does?
Paul Sadek.
Paul Sadek? Mr. Sadek?
Yeah, okay, I finally could unmute myself. I have a question. As, I don't know who's in in attendance, but I've been an official for many years. Uh, and what I'm hearing from Mark is very interesting because I think the town needs to issue. Town email addresses to any elected official or anybody on a board that requests it now.
I didn't know we didn't already do that.
We don't.
What was that?
I didn't realize that we didn't do it already. I thought anyone.
No, listen, I use my personal email, anything that's directed to me from anyone on the boards I'm on comes in my personal email.
That's a good point.
It is a good point.
Yeah, I I I honestly, this is the only position I've held and I got a official email, so I I never really thought about that.
We've we've discussed this before, we we recommend that that towns adopt social media policies. But we also have discussed uh the importance of having town email addresses. And I'm aware um some towns have capacity and some don't. But it is tricky, just as 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 Paul referenced, if you have no other means of communication. Now, you could you could take the position, I won't, I won't respond to any email that comes into my private email. And but it's difficult because as we all know, that's a method of communication. It's not just because you want to necessarily send emails out. But again, if if uh if if Deb or Luanne wants to send you information and you're not accepting emails. Or you don't have an email account, I've had, I've had boards where individuals said, I don't even do email. And it makes communication very difficult. I I will, I'll come in, I'll pick up a package, you have to print out the materials for them. That's that's what's, some some folks have used that as a response. But in general, if there's capacity, the use of an official free town town email address avoids some of the issues that we just talked about. Where uh it makes it easier for the town clerk to maintain, it makes it easier to manage. And it makes it easier to avoid the pitfalls of having your your public information mixed with your private information. And the potential that you might not even realize that you haven't forwarded something or you haven't preserved it. Because it it came in with a whole batch of emails and you were just cleaning your, cleaning your inbox.
Yeah, I mean definitely, let's look, let's look into that. I'm not sure if there's any kind of, if it's like a crazy expense, if that's the reason why we have it.
We have to get a new um server, uh an email server, we're working on that actually, but it is about twenty five thousand dollars.
We can't do a cloud-based approach for that? Oh, Paul, get your hand up, Phil.
Yeah, I I mean, I I get emails from three boards, all kinds of emails.
Yep.
I I mean, to hear what I'm hearing now, I mean, this is nuts. We ought to have, anybody that wants to have a town email should have it, if they're an elected official or an appointed official, whatever.
Yeah, I agree with Paul, hundred percent agree.
I can't, I certainly can't disagree with Paul.
Yeah.
Um, I know how much Paul has has done for the town and I think he's making a legitimate point. Uh, it does come to down to resources, so there's a diff- the, there's a dichotomy between available resources. And and how the 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 law looks at something. Uh, obviously, if you're using your 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 private email address, I do recommend segregating. You get it, you get a uh an email on on public business, put it in a separate folder, so it's easily found. So if someone says, we need all of your emails ba- based upon your participation as a board member, you have them in one place. Your your in and your out is all in one place. Uh, so that way the there's no need to go searching through your your documents. And you know, most important thing to recognize is if somebody asks you, if the town clerk says, I got this email, this request for public records. Send me your records, that you don't say, no, that was my private email address, I'm not sending you anything. Uh, and I and I've I've had situations like that where members of boards have said, that's my, that's my private business. And you can't look at it. And uh.
Doesn't go well.
It doesn't go well because we would, our response would be, we we can't provide it. But under the, under the public records law, and the public records law was overhauled a few years ago. And there's a private right of action to go into court. And if 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 uh an individual goes into court because of a non-compliance with the public records law, you can't charge fees. So you lose the ability to charge uh copy costs and search costs, but also you're subject to paying their 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 attorney fees. So forget any penalties, you're you're paying their attorney to bring this action. Even if during that action, you say, oh, we found the records here, they are, you're going to be paying their attorney's fees. So there's, there's a significant cost to that and it's not one, it's not a pleasant process. And it's not one that you really want to be dealing with. It is avoidable. Do I say it's easily avoidable? It's most easily avoidable, like Paul suggested, if you have an official address. But as a backup, if you're going to be put in a situation like Paul mentioned, where you you're sitting on a number of boards. And you have to get emails to at your private email address, segregate them in in your your email folders. So that they're they're easily found, you could then ship them off to to the the town clerk's office. Stick the town clerk with the the obligation of maintaining. So there, the the that's the logical mechanism so that you don't wind up in a situation where you're thinking, oh, my gosh, I don't know if I got an email or not. Just develop a routine where you you put it in a folder. And I know it's it's may not be second nature, but maybe it it should be if you're not, if you're not using a town email address for your official communications.
So I mean, it sounds like we're moving forward in the right direction with being able to do that at least, right? Because it is, I mean, you have volunteers that, you know, that I just don't want to have to see them trying to do something.
And I think it's, I I think like Paul said, if if you want it, if you want to get a town, official town email address while you have it. I the the, I guess we'll have to make sure that um once someone's no longer on a board, they they lose access to it or something. We'll have to come up with a policy, we're definitely not the first town to do this, so I'm sure we can lean on, you know, some neighboring towns. Yes, Joe?
I'm asking for the attorney if I can, Chair.
Yep.
Um, so when I have new employees or new board members who get appointed and sometimes it's a revolving door. Um, at appointment, I'll usually tell them, you know, explain the the assessment and the conflict of interest law and and um public records law and open meeting law. And personally, I'll I'll always tell them, you know, just be careful because now everything that you have is now becomes, you know, public information. You know, they can actually seize your computer and take that from you. And I usually get the roll of the eye or come on now, and they kind of just laugh it off. I'm I'm trying to notify them, is there something else that I should be saying or doing as town clerk, as swearing in these new board members? Because I don't think a lot of people take it seriously. They look at me as if I have seven heads.
And they, and they look at me.
I'm just trying to make everybody compliant so that the town is not liable.
I get the same reaction. Um, and and I've I've had debates with with elected officials who have said, no way. And I'm I'm, I don't want a town email address and nobody's touching my stuff. And that's a great, it's a great position, it's not a legal position.
Yeah.
And so we can't, we can't satisfy everybody and you can't stop somebody from rolling their eyes, but they have to do the ethics training, as you know. And you're supposed to give them a copy of the open meeting law and and so they 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 get a package. And ultimately, um, some of.
They're not reading it.
They may not be, you you can't force somebody to 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 learn. But they 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 need to know that ethics violations run to the individual. So people who say, oh, what what's the big deal, you could be fined by the ethics commission. The ethics commission is not fun. You don't want to be dealing with the ethics commission if if uh you're on the receiving end of one of their investigations. And the open meeting law, we've all seen, unfortunately for better or worse, we see uh open meeting law complaints that come in. We have a a good friend who watches uh Free Town closely and so we deal with those things regularly. And even even though that goes to the board and not the individual, it does require the individual to go through. Um, an effort to to figure out what was what was going on. Public records, there are ethics implications for withholding public records, uh because that, those are, those are records of the town.
And can you clear, can you clarify that? So both are listening. Once the town receives something, if it's not under those exemption laws, it is a public record.
Well, what I always remind everybody is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I always remind everyone is that every, every record created by the town. Be it through a town board, a town official, every record is a public record. The question, as as the town clerk just referenced, is whether it's subject to mandatory disclosure. And there are exemptions, there are a number of exemptions under chapter four, section seven, clause twenty six, there are a whole listing of exemptions. And we look at those when someone requests certain records, uh there there are personal and personnel exemptions. There's uh strategic exemptions and uh uh policy determination exemptions, there are a bunch of exemptions we look at. Those are exemptions from disclosure, it doesn't mean that they're not public records. So even if you have a record that you think should not be uh dis- dis- distributed, that doesn't mean it's not a public record. It just means it's not subject to mandatory disclosure. And that's an important distinction because if you are communicating with a a a resident. On and and there's there's medical information or highly personal information, that's a public record. It may be subject to to withholding and redaction if somebody made a request for it, but it's still a public record. And I don't know about you, but I don't necessarily want to think that I spoke to a town official. And in that, I said, and by the way, my my child is in a special needs class and takes these medications and is very sensitive. And you put all that information in an email and it becomes a public record. It may not be subject to mandatory disclosure, but unfortunately, as we all know, a public record once created is s- i- i- is subject to being seen. And and so individuals need to recognize, if you're doing that in your private email and and you have this information. And I use that as an extreme example, but it's a real example and it's come up. I I've had that very situation come up where someone communicated, talking about very sensitive personal information. And then it came into the town, uh because it was in an email, it was properly provided to a town clerk. But it wound up in the hands of someone else and a a different public official, and then it got released. And then it became a whole issue, we had an executive session, we had a a uh uh an open meeting law complaint. About the distribution of material and it 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 snowballed. And uh we wound up in a situation where we were responding to the attorney general's office and having to redact documents that we're sending to the attorney general. It becomes very complicated, but it could compromise someone's privacy. And whether that that then exposes the town to civil rights uh violations for for disclosing HIPAA protected information. Or other student information, there's so many, and that's another one that's come up, where student information gets released and that exposes the town. To uh uh to to civil rights violations. So again, being very careful not to, not to communicate on a, on a private email address. Matters that could result in the creation of a public record with sensitive information. It's a, it's a very good example because it it just, it it tells you why it's not a good idea to use those forms of communication. They are all public records, subject to potential uh withholding. And again, withholding is discretionary from the town, there are certain circumstances where there's mandatory withholding. Um, Corey information and HIPAA information and uh student information. There are a number of categories that are that are mandatory for disclosure, others, personal and personnel, that becomes a judgment call. It's not mandatory that it be withheld, and so you don't know if that information is suddenly going to become public. So I know we're kind of straying a bit off the specific topic.
But it's all intertwined.
It's all within that same circle. We we talk about circles and what's within that circle.
I feel like we could talk about this all night, you know.
Can I just ask one more question? If you could please clarify, um, you spoke to documents originating from the town or the specific boards or commissions. How about documents that are not originated by the town, but come to us and are in files? Such as, for an example, a building inspector file, a contractor comes in, maybe has to provide his uh worker's comp liability insurance certificate. That document is just a copy that is now in their files, it's in our possession, but it was not originated by the town. Can you clarify that, please?
That's a very good question. And uh again, we looked at chapter four, um, section seven, clause twenty six. That has um definitions of public records and then the exemptions. The definition specifically says, public record shall mean all books, papers, maps, photographs, recorded tapes. Financial statements, statistical tabulations, or other documentary materials or data, regardless of physical form or characteristics. Made or received by any officer or em- employee or of any agency. Executive office, department, board, commission, bureau, division, or authority of the Commonwealth, or any political subdivision thereof. So you receive, and and we get this a lot when when you you go out to bid for for some good or service. And you require certain information. And when it comes in, the bidders provide all kinds of documents and then they stamp them confidential. And public rec- public documents that are received, documents that are received in in an effort to obtain a contract. Are public records, subject to disclosure, there's no exemption for that. They can be withheld if it's if it's a request for proposals and their and their proposals are still being uh evaluated. You withhold them until the evaluation is over, but once the contract is awarded, that withholding is is done. And those become public records. And we're constantly having companies say, oh, could you send back our proprietary or financial information? We sent that only for the purpose of the bid, no can do. Once it's received, it's a public record, you can't give it back. And we we have contracts that actually say in them that we receive from vendors that say. Um, proprietary information shall be returned to the vendor when this contract is terminated. You can't do that, it's a public record. So again, the 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 moral of the story is, if you're using private email or social media. Be mindful that your communications made in in, under the the guise of your official capacity. Uh, can and likely will become public records.
All right, thank you very much, this is extremely helpful. I think that um we all learned a lot today.
I know it was a mouthful.
No, that's great, that was great. Um, so I think, sorry, did I give?
I just have one question, one clarification. So you say things on Facebook per se that are under the guise of your official capacity, right? Well, I'm Debbie Petty and I'm on there to say my opinions, but it might be about things that have to do with the town. Is that, I mean, people, but people know that I'm the interim town administrator. So, I mean, where does that line get drawn between, I didn't say I I'm Debbie Petty, the interim town administrator. And I think this, I'm having a conversation, but they know who I am and they know my position, so.
That, and that gets to some of the things we were talking about earlier. Um, you don't, you don't take a position and give up your your uh first amendment rights to speak. You you certainly, you can, you can be in favor of green instead of blue and you can consider, continue to say that. Um, you as the interim town administrator, you're obviously you're not subject to the open meeting law because you're not a board. But if you, if you comment on something that's specifically within your jurisdiction. Uh, as 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 to the town administrator position or as to the a board. Uh, say a a planning board member comments uh favor or not in favor of a particular project. That is going, is is before them, even though they're saying, I'm only commenting as an individual, there's a potential. Um, and and you, you can do that, the problem that that comes up is if other board members chime in. And and so you 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 just have to be careful if you, and usually we say, you know, just make a statement. I'm speaking as an individual and not as a board member. But if a, if a matter is already before a board, it should not be discussed in social media. So even though you have an opinion as an individual, once the matter is before you, you could taint the process. If you get on and say, look, I'm speaking as an individual, but I'm not in favor of this. Can, it it can suggest some some preconceptions of the project. But again, you're entitled to your opinion. I just caution, when it gets to that point, that the the matter is actually before you, you you. you you just need to be careful that you're not revealing something that was discussed at a board meeting, that might be have just been discussed at the executive session, or that you might be expressing information that you obtained as a board member that's not available to the public at as a whole. So there there are a number of wrinkles to it. It again, it's very difficult, because social media can be a trap, and you could wind up saying things, then realizing, oh, my gosh, I just put myself in the middle of something. So if it seems like it's a bad idea, it probably is.
All right, great. So this leads right next to our next agenda item, by the way. So we're gonna have a presentation from Archive Social on archive and reporting on social media. So Adam, is he on the Zoom? Okay.
Adam, you're also.
All right. Am I on?
You're on. I'm not sure.
Okay, cool. Hello, everybody. My name's Adam Deshane, and I'm with Archive Social. Sorry, I haven't been able to hear what was going on previous, but here at Archive Social, we work with government agencies to keep them in compliance with the public records laws in their particular states in regards to social media. So we help with compliance and then any mitigating any risk associated with social media. I've been working with Luanne and Lola for the past couple of months to figure out how we can get Archive Social in place, and thought it'd be a good idea to just kind of give you a brief overview of what we do and how we keep agencies across the country compliant and mitigate those risks. Across the country, we work with over seven thousand government agencies, over three hundred in Massachusetts alone. Now, we work with some of your neighbors there, New Bedford, Taunton, Kuschnit, Middleborough, just to name a few. And mainly, the thing is, when you create a social media platform for a government agency, you're creating a limited public forum that you're obligated under the Massachusetts Public Records Laws to be able to retain and be able to produce that content when requested for inspection. So the the three core reasons that agencies archive their social media, number one is compliance. You realize you have that legal obligation. Number two is just you realize that records are lost from the networks. These networks, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, any of them, they are all very great communication tools, marketing tools. They're not records retention tools, and they're not records custodians, and they do not keep you compliant with the public records laws. They're just very unreliable, and holding records is the main case there. And and the third reason is you just anticipate you're gonna get a records request that's gonna be requesting content from your social media, whether it's a internal request for some content from your page, it could be a FOIA request, or it could be a legal situation where a lawsuit against the city and information is being requested from some conversations that may have happened on your social media or some information you were posting on a particular event that happened. And all that information is requestable, so it's about being proactive, having something in place that is gonna capture these records as they hit your page and enters them into a very searchable, reliable database. And when you get a request, you're able to go back and you're getting everything. You have the peace of mind that if anybody puts a comment out there and deletes it within seconds, it's in the archive. If someone puts a comment out there and edits the comment, you have the edited version, you have the original version, all with the metadata that we capture within the archive to be able to authenticate that record. And there are many ways that content is lost. Many, most times, it's citizens removing comments or editing their comments. But also the networks, they they do lose content, and they're simply not reliable for holding on to your public record. If a citizen deletes a comment for that, for instance, essentially, they're destroying public record. And there's just no ramifications to the citizen, as the onus is on the agency to be retaining that content. And we've seen a huge uptick in First Amendment challenges when the information is removed from the page. And and a lot of times, it's not the agency that's definitely necessarily removing content. Most of you have been schooled up enough or educated to know that there's some First Amendment challenges when you're moderating some conversations on social media. However, there are times when you do run into problematic citizens or people that just continue to spam your site with conspiracy theories, things like that. And it's gonna be a time where you have to remove content or you have to block somebody. So you want to have that information, be able to say, well, here's our social media policy. Here's how you violated the policy with these comments, and that's why you were blocked. Now, that doesn't necessarily waive someone's First Amendment rights 100% by any means, but it certainly, we've seen where that stops the conversation, because you have all the content as to why you took this action to have to remove somebody. Or even if a citizen, if you're in a a comment thread on Facebook, for instance, and a citizen puts a comment out there and gets replies to their comment, if they delete their original comment, it deletes the entire thread. So even though you're not deleting the content at the agency, that content is still being removed from your public record. And citizens will generally come to the the town and say, why are you moderating my comments? And it's not that, it's not you, it's it's the other citizen that removed their comment, that domino effect, and it removed the other comments. You need to be able to protect yourself when you get those challenges. Having an archive gives you kind of that peace of mind. Basically, how we work is we have an API tied right in with all the networks and basically capture these records as as soon as they hit. And anything that goes on beyond that, we again archive it in a safe environment where you're able to, very searchable, and I've gone through it with with Luanne, very searchable, you get a records request, it's a matter of minutes, you put in what the request is, everything's spit out and it's exported, and you're done with that in minutes. Currently, the process you have is to go back, scroll through, find the conversation, hope what you're being requested is there, because you know social media is a living document, right? People can contribute to it. People can remove their comments from it. So you're just going back, you're scrolling, you're capturing what's there at that moment in time, and it may or may not be what's being requested, because it has the ability to to change. So that's what we do. We protect agencies by archiving their public records and giving them a searchable database to be able to go through and produce records of those that are requested. Are there any, that's kind of the what I wanted to kind of introduce you to Archive Social. We've been in business over 20 years. We're down here in, well, I'm in Charlotte, North Carolina, but we're based here in North Carolina. So everything's US, everything's held here in the United States as well. I know that's important to a lot of agencies we work with. But are there any questions that that I can answer that are particular to Freetown?
Yeah, Adam, this is Trevor Matthews, Selectman. So thank you very much. That was very informative, and you should have heard the the last person we had speaking, our counsel just did a whole speech spiel on this exact topic, and, you know, everything lined up, so it checks out. But my question being, so I'm assuming that this works, you know, this software is for situations where the town itself is the admin of this Facebook page, right?
That's that's correct. We have to have to be pages that are administered by officially by the town or or elected officials. An elected official has a page.
That's my next question.
So if you need permissions, we can't necessarily just do, you know, group pages or community pages, things like that.
Yeah, so if we had a board member who was running like a a public page that's related, you know, about the town, like, is that something that we could use this software to assist in the archiving? You know, to if there's any other, you know, additional file, any kind of request, right, information request?
Yeah, I think if I understand your your question correctly, yes, you can add other pages to the archive that are administered by a government employee of the of the city or town. Now, it does have to be certain pages, group pages. Facebook does not let anybody archive group pages. There was some sort of lawsuit on those for some reason. I forget exactly what it was. So it would have to be turned into a business page, and then it can be it can join the archive of the city, as long as you have the administer the administrators of the page have to agree to that.
Yeah, what I'm thinking here is like a social media policy for the town where if, you know, you're acting in an official capacity, and you have if you have any kind of social media presence, you know, a part of our policy is that you have to give access to, you know, Archive Social to for just for, you know, obviously for risk mitigation, right? All right.
Yes, yes.
I have two questions, Jared Zager and Ella Selectman. Sounds kind of foolish to ask, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. Do we have to notify the public that are going on any of these things that we are archiving the information? Is there any legal, anything legally that we have to put up that we are archiving any and all information that's coming up to us or through this?
I'm sorry, I I that came through kind of muffled. Can can you move closer?
I'll speak up a little bit more.
He's from North Carolina. He doesn't understand us.
We talk with a different, we're a different language up here. So so my question for you is, when if we say we are using our Facebook, you're monitoring our Facebook page, do we have to have anything on there to state that we are monitoring this page through your software? Right? So that the public knows that if I go on and comment something, that it's going to be recorded as public documents, say?
Yeah, that would be more of a legal question. I I have seen that sometimes, but I haven't seen that very often. It's probably less than 10% of the agencies we work with that actually have that on their page. It doesn't hurt to have it. I mean, I wouldn't see where it would hurt to to let folks know that this is public record being recorded by for for Town of Freetown. But I think that'd be more of a legal question, if that needs to be divulged or not.
It might prevent some mean comments.
I I happen to have a guy next to me.
If if I may, just briefly on that point. In my opinion, if you are posting comments on a public page, you don't have a particular right of privacy. It's much like people say, you can't take my picture when I'm sitting in the park. You're you're in a public place. I'm not selling your image, using it for profit, but I but I you you can be captured. I have a lot of folks who have said, I didn't know that meeting was being recorded. I want you to delete that recording, because I didn't give a permission, give permission to be recorded. And that's why we do at the beginning of every meeting, we say, this meeting is going to be recorded because of of federal and state wiretap purposes. But as to social media, you are contributing to a public page, and you you've essentially given up a lot of your privacy rights. So just, you know, again, be mindful. You contribute to a public page, it's public, and you're 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 expected to know that. And so it's not a not a terrible thing to to put a disclaimer, but where it's where it is, the official Town of Freetown page, that is, that's a that's a public.
Yeah, that's clearly public. It's more gray areas, right?
I think the gray is on the the sites that are maintained by a private individual, a private Facebook page, but they're they're using it for public purposes. Again, if a board member has their own Facebook page and they're calling it Board Member So-and-so's Page, and they talk about town events, that that could be deemed a, again, that's the concern that the Inspector General has raised, and the Attorney General has raised, that at that point, it's even though it's private, it it bleeds into the the public realm. And so monitoring in this fashion, people may not may not be aware of that. So so that that's a slightly different circumstance. That's a little a little more of a gray situation. But again, that's hence the warning here, that those private pages that are conducted in a manner that looks public and where the individual who's running it is communicating in their in their official capacity, that essentially becomes like a like a like a public a public site, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Charles, any questions for Adam?
No, pretty straightforward. Keep it public, keep it simple, but don't discuss what you can't discuss.
Yeah, Cheryl.
I would just be interested in to know what cities and towns in Massachusetts that this company works with.
They mentioned there's over 300, but including Taunton, New Bedford.
Some that are our size, anything that's our size. Okay, thank you.
Over 300 Massachusetts municipalities. We only have 351.
No, or maybe it was 300, like organizations, maybe in Massachusetts. I think that's what he said.
Thank you.
I'm wrong, Adam.
Say that again?
So you said, did you say 300 towns in Massachusetts or 300 municipalities? Yeah.
Three, three, 300 agencies. So it could be, you know, it could be a conservation district. It could be counties, it's cities, towns, it's law enforcement, school districts, any government agency.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
If I may, just one.
And a lot of them will tie them together. Like, if you guys have PD there, you know, you 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 put all of the departments under one archive, you could have, you know, the city page, the Parks and Rec page, the Selectman pages, if you decide to do that, the fire department, any any agency that falls under the city could join this archive.
The one comment that I was going to make, if I may, is when when the gentleman was talking about blocking individuals or stopping comment, you've probably all heard about the recent Barron decision, the the South Borough decision, talking about public comment. And that's that's very much a First Amendment and constitutional issue as to the ability to regulate public comment. And the the concern arises, and and I imagine this this will be, this this is potentially a a next area where 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 a court may be asked to look at this, but cutting off somebody who's commenting on a public page because you don't like the way they're saying something, that gets into content-based, potentially content-based discrimination. That's what the South Borough case was about, that basically said, we cannot regulate content, we can't even regulate civility in our meetings. That's the takeaway, that that public comment is 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 something of a free-for-all. So there is a concern, when it used to be somebody used foul language on your your Facebook page, and you might cut them off, just as you would say at a in public comment at a a public meeting, be courteous, be be polite, don't use profanity. This court case basically said that that's no longer the case.
Gotcha. That's, yeah.
That's interesting.
Not not great.
Surprising.
Yes.
All right. Well, Adam, thank you very much for that presentation. That was very helpful. Any other questions? All right. I'm sure you'll be hearing from him shortly.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'll have a good evening.
You as well.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay, that was that was interesting.
Yeah, a lot of information to wrap your head around.
Do we have pricing on that and all that? All right, so we'll review that in the future.
I think it's, I think it's $350.
I think it's $350 a month for up to 12 pages.
Yeah, that's a, no offense, it's a lot, it's a lot less than like a legal hour. Cheryl, yep.
Sorry, I have a lot of questions or comments. It's just that this is part of my realm and that I'm in every day. So the issue, so as an elected town official, as town clerk, because we do do elections, I have my own social media policy within my department that because we're supposed to be impartial. So we do have our employees notified of that. Secondly, in regards to the pages, I think that's the concern here, is determining what is a town official page. I've seen different. So I don't have a town clerk page. Anything that I want posted goes through the official Town of Freetown page, and then I share it to the community ones. I see a lot of different.
There's Freetown, there's the Freetowners page, like.
Well, that's the community pages. I mean, specifically departmental pages within our town that are are, you know, town departments.
That's why we gotta nail down our social media policy, right? Because it's it's kind of grown grown organically at this point, and I think that we need we need to step in and prevent that from happening going forward, right? It's either gotta be an official town website or specifically not an official town website, and that needs to be clear, right? And then, you know, it's just it's just defining the policy, right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. I just wanted to make sure.
No, because I that's I I didn't even real, I'm not on Facebook, so I didn't even realize like that we had other, you know, I know we have the official Town of Freetown one, but I didn't know there was other.
And it's just concerning to me. So I post through the town and then through mine, and then filter out to the community pages. Just as a general rule, I do it for informational purposes, just because everyone complains or, you know, I didn't know there was a meeting going on, I didn't know there was an election, it's an FYI. But then you have the comments that go into it, and I don't respond to anything, because I think it's on the the poster to seek out the correct department, contact the direct department in order to get those specific questions answered, because it just opens up a whole, a whole world.
Believe me, I think it was all like, I, people have asked many times, why? Believe me, I think it was all, like, I, people have asked many times, why don't you communicate with everybody on Facebook? Like, you know, it's like such an easy, convenient way to do it, and I, and I get that, and it struggles, and I struggle with not doing it. It's just, I know the risk, and so I just refuse to do it, right? It's just, we all survived, you know, before Facebook, I think we'll survive after it, so I just.
My space.
Yeah. Yeah, so I just, I just made the decision just not to do it for that exact reason, right? It's just so risky.
I think, I think the town clerks makes, makes a good point, when Cheryl says, you know, there's a, a page, it has certain information on the page, but it's, it's not a page for response. You could post things, post announcements, you know, post specific information, but when people ask questions, to direct them, you know, to, to a department to get the response.
Yeah.
That way, you're not, you're not engaging in a discussion that could potentially have pitfalls.
Yeah, that's what, and I think this is just us defining our, our, our social media policy, right?
And you're right, it, it evolves organically, but there does reach a point where you, you have to put some controls in place.
Absolutely. All right, is that, is your question? All right, so this is something we'll have to, and hopefully we'll probably steal one from, you know, maybe our friends over at Archive Social.
We have, we have examples also.
Yeah, perfect. I don't know, so you mentioned you have one for.
So in our clerks network, we, we have a huge working network. So I have samples from other towns that Board of Selectmen approve, and then are handed out upon appointment and upon taking their oath. So I'd be more than happy to share those with you, along with my own specific departmental one.
Perfect, that'd be great, thank you. All right.
Yeah, obviously if counsel can share with us what he has.
Yeah, and I wouldn't be surprised, Lauren Goldberg has probably seen a lot of what you.
Lauren, Danielle, all of them, yeah, Eddie Dug.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
All right, awesome. Okay, moving on, so now we're gonna go, we have the articles for the, placing the warrant for the June 5th. Is that tech official yet? I think it is, it is official, I voted on that, sorry, been a long day. Okay, I'm just gonna read the explanations of the articles, I think that might be the most efficient way to do it. And then we can vote whether we want them on or not. So, first article, they're not numbered yet, so authorization, okay, I have to do the article name too. So, apply, accept, and ex, uh, extend Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant. And the explanation there is, the authorization is a stepping stone in the process for seeking state grants towards the construction of our new library facilities. I don't have no issues with this?
Yeah, this is a requirement in order to do it for the grant, that we, we do this article at town meeting.
Okay, and I'm just gonna read the entire articles here, because that didn't work well. Yeah, I think, let me see.
I just wanna make sure that I'm not overstaying my welcome.
You're invited, whatever you want. I think that, yeah, I think we're all set. Thank you very much for your help tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate you having me.
Okay, so second article.
Come whenever.
Yeah, yeah, just, just don't bill us for it. All right, so the next article is Planning Design Phase of Massachusetts Public Library, did I say that? Already did this one, so this is related to the first article. Planning and design phase of Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant. This is to see if the town will vote and raise the appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $150,000 as local funding for the planning and design phase of the towns participating in the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program, and/or take any action relative thereto. So this is obviously setting that the, you have to spend money to get money kind of situation?
Yeah, and I, I think I'm gonna do, so these are in very rough draft. In fact, these are probably gonna get moved to the annual town meeting rather than the special town meeting. But this is, if we don't get the grant, we won't be spending this money.
Okay.
So it is exactly, yes, we have to put some money, they're gonna match it up to $100,000, that'll be for the design phase. But we're in the process of doing, and Nicole, she's here, she, she can talk to it too, of, of getting a study done, and once we get further along, we'll, we'll, we'll talk more about it. But these have to go through in order for us to apply for the grant. Nicole wants to add anything to it, but.
No, it's just accurate, these, they have to be done like around when you send your application in, and it's just put them voted on sooner rather than later, because if we don't have them done, then we won't be eligible.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
And the grant that we're talking about would pay for 50% of the library, up to, I should say, up to 50, 55% of the library build.
Wow.
And even if it's a joint building, it will pay for up to 55% of that portion of the building. So it's a very substantial grant if in fact we get it, there, there are a lot of hoops that have, we have to jump through.
What was the second part you said there, so up to 50% of, if it's an addition or something, is that what you said?
Like even if it's a joint building, it used to be that it wouldn't pay for them.
So if there was a COA, like, you know, we talked about the COA library.
Yeah.
Should we add that language to the explanation, so people can see?
I have to work on the explanation, just so people understand that this money won't be spent unless we receive the grant, so.
Because you know if someone's, yeah, that, that will come up.
But they wanna make sure that the town is behind the library build, and that they're committed, they're putting something in the, into the town.
Okay, that's, that's awesome, yep, I have no problem with that. All right, next is funding for the fire station renovation addition. So to see if the town will vote and raise the appropriate sum of $3 million for the renovation addition to Fire Station 3. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, except in, ultimately it's gonna be split into two articles. One will be for roughly $2.5 million, and that will be, and the reason we split them into two, because there's two different funding sources, and they need two different numbers of votes. So one will be $2.5 million from free cash, which only requires a majority vote. Then the other one will be $500,000 from stabilization, and that will require a two-thirds vote. And those are gonna be on the special, and they need to be on the special so that I can get the free cash into that article.
That makes sense.
And I believe at this point, we will then, at the end, we'll be putting money back into the stabilization, but it's sort of this little game we have to play with the special versus annual town meeting.
Yep. Okay, any questions, concerns, it's pretty straightforward?
Nope.
Okay, great. Moving on, this is to create the opioid settlement stabilization fund, to see if the town will vote to create opioid settlement stabilization fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Section 5B, Chapter 40, and to appropriate a sum of money to fund, some of, some of money to such fund, determine whether this is appropriation shall be from free cash or other available funds or otherwise, and take any other action relative thereto. So this is obviously just, we have to set up.
Set up the fund.
Fund to get the money from the opioid.
Yeah, we've already gotten some money, so it's a matter of, it's, it's.
Procedural.
Yes, it is really procedural, it's, money has to go into the general fund, and then we're gonna have to vote to take it out of the general fund and put it in the stabilization.
Yeah, so that was gonna be my question, the money that we received already, are we gonna have to now vote to say we've received, we're gonna throw a number out there, $5, and we have to do something in order to take that $5 and switch it into this fund?
Yes, and, and it's a requirement of getting the settlement money, right, is that you can only use it for specific things.
Probably like drug mitigation type, or like, yeah, impact.
So we kinda have to do this, but it's, it's, I don't, it's crazy the way it's, it has to be done, but yes.
Wouldn't expect anything else.
These may actually come off of this, because our, our settlement money came in fiscal year '23. We almost have to wait till, we have to wait till, I shouldn't, we almost, we have to wait till next year to have it certified as free cash, and then we can move it.
Okay.
So they may come off, but I just wanted, they were on here, let's get them approved, and if I have to take them off, I'll take them off, or I might leave this creation of the stabilization fund on, but the actual funding of it off.
Okay.
Hope that makes sense.
That does, all right, and then the next part of this, another article, is just the opioid settlement stabilization fund, or did I say that one? Or this, right, and fund it, create the fund, create the fund, and then you fund the fund. All right, so I think we're all on the same page there. Then we have art, is the sale of Four Self-Meast Street with deed restrictions.
Right, so that's a placeholder, I, I'm wait, I gotta wait for town council to give me the language, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I have some language, I'm gonna draft, and then when we send these up to town council, he can, he can tweak it.
Any questions or concerns, I think we've spoken about this a lot recently, the House, you know, like to sell that building, but deed restrictions to maintain the character of the four corners there. All right, next article would be purchase and installation of pods for temporary space for the Council on Aging, to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate and, and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of purchasing two pods, installation and incentive costs, and related thereto, out of the Council on Aging, blah, blah, blah.
This one actually is probably gonna change, just, I forgot to change this, the wording. We, this is gonna have to be a reclassification of the funds that are already set aside that, that were petitioned for the COA building.
Million or so, right?
There's 1.1 million there, I don't have any other funds to pay for these pods, right? You know, so they, it needs to come out of that, that existing money. So that'll be something that the board wants to decide whether they wanna move forward with that. But I don't have another pot of money right now to get the money to pay for these pods, and I know, they're, they're looking forward to these.
That's good, there's, there's, is there something consensus down there that they like over there?
Yes, I think they want the pods, I don't know, that's, you know, they're back and forth the boat, they're just giving them their pods and they'll be happy, I think. I actually, I think the building committee is gonna meet and, you know, just to confirm that they're on the same page with buying these pods. And this is purchasing them versus leasing them, because then they can have, they can be repurposed, you know? And I also have the building commissioner to go check them out now, because he's new and he hasn't seen the pods, to, to look at the logistics of how we hook the pods up actually to the existing building. So it won't be like a separate building that have to go into, we're, we're, we're trying to figure out what the best configuration will be, and making sure there isn't gonna be something that I didn't foresee as far as expense.
Yeah, like, I could think of like a sewer type, I don't, I think we, they figured that part out, yeah, but something, it's always.
I don't think there are any issues, I think we hashed them out, but I want him to weigh in, and then again, we'll meet with the building committee. I'm not sure, there's still two schools with this money in terms of it's their money and they don't want it spent. I don't, like I said, I, as a town with our budgets, I don't have another place to take this funds from, for these pods. So this is gonna be, to see if the town will reclassify the funds appropriated, and I will have to put in the language of the town meeting that it was voted for, and the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of purchasing these pods.
Okay.
So the wording will change, but as long as you're okay with the, actually the intent of the article.
Yeah, that's, exactly, all right, and then last one, I mean, yeah, we have another fire, fire station one, but that's just because, I get it. And then the stabilization fund, obviously we don't know what that's gonna be yet.
That's probably coming off of the special, because there won't be any money left over.
Yeah, and then we have the operating budget, obviously, don't know, have those numbers yet?
Pretty much forgetting them.
Our salaries, so this is article salary composition for elected officials. I don't think anything's changed. Maybe highways are bare?
The yellow will change, or is that a?
I think they've changed, the numbers have changed, but the article, they, I mean, in order for any of these positions to get, you know, they have, they have to go to town meeting to get their raises or to, to vote for their salaries. So this article has to be on there. I think the, the department request in the middle is all updated with the, the requests from the department heads. Fincom hasn't met and hasn't seen, you know, voted on these yet.
Yeah, nope, exactly.
Anything that's yellow on any of the draft there is something we have to confirm, the numbers.
That makes sense.
Is that because they're new, or we just haven't discussed it?
They're just, I don't have those numbers.
Okay, yeah, because like, for example, the operating budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, right? We don't, we probably don't have that number yet.
Right.
All right, and that is our next article we're talking about here. So it was $1.3 million, I'm assuming, last year, right?
Yes.
All right.
We just got that, did we get it today, we just have to update these, yeah.
And then we have the revolving fund, so there's the annual town report, exams, those are, sorry, Board of Selectmen has annual town report, police department has exam fund, police department has a firearm safety course, Board of Selectmen has Long Pond, and the vaccine revolving fund, which we established. So it's just setting the expenditure limit, right?
Yeah, it's just, it just allows them to use that portion of the revolving fund throughout the year.
Yep. Moving on, we have the cable fund appropriation.
This is the peg access money that we use to page on to video the, the meetings, and as well as any other town outings that we have, and also sometimes I, I use it to buy some equipment for recording, and it just went out of my head, we use it for something else. That's what that's used for.
I know, there's something else too, I'm trying to remember.
Peg access.
Can this be used for what we talked about previously, for the social media?
Ooh.
Can we use this?
I'm not sure, because it's very specific, and it's mostly due to like video recording, like I bought the owl with it, because that's like a, like a, for the Zoom meetings, right? Taking that out of there, but it's.
Also paying MCAM and Lake Cam.
And Lake Cam, that was the other two, yeah, those contracts that we have with them to post our stuff. So that's where that, that number, you know, we receive money, once, you know, for, for subscribers to Comcast throughout the town, we get a portion of that, and that goes into this cable fund, and then we, we just have to vote it over to use it, to be able to spend it.
All right, makes sense, next is the additional funds into the Conservation Land Fund, and this is, I mean, is this number actual, the 70,000?
This one is correct, yeah.
So to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $73,109.59 to be added to the Conservation Land Fund established under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, and/or take any action relative thereto, so this is the rollback taxes generally represent open land being slated for development, and a well-funded land fund would allow the future purchase of land. So this is us having some money to, as those properties become available.
Right, this will go into conservation so that they can buy, purchase land. The rollback taxes, you know, if you have land in chat, protected by chapter, like, whether it be agricultural or, you know, different things, you don't pay, you're, you get a discount.
Until that, that property changes hands, right?
Right, if you wanna take it out of agricultural and then use it for development, you have to pay this rollback tax. So it's not a tax that the town has planned on having, right? So it's sort of like, oh, we didn't plan on getting this tax, but now we're getting this rollback tax. So the Conservation Commission would like to take that money and keep it in a fund. In fact, they're buying a piece, I think they came before the board, not that long ago, to buy a piece of land, and that's where the funds are coming from.
That makes sense, I like that idea, and that, that makes a lot of sense. Or like, I know some towns, they have just a fee on every real estate.
CPA, I think it's called.
Like the Nantucket has that, they just, they're buying like, they're like the biggest landowner in Nantucket now.
Oh, wow.
All right. Moving on, engineering study for the Son of Four Corners intersection, this is for $45,000 for engineering study for the Four Corners.
This is just to, I, I, we had, Serpa did a traffic study, we did complete streets with the grant monies, and both of those came up and said, in order to determine what to do with the Four Corners to improve it, we need to do for the, further engineering and further studies. So Victoria from planning went and got a couple of quotes, and this is the money that we need to sort of continue that discussion about what are we gonna do with the Four Corners and how are we gonna make it safer. So this is one of the few actual money articles we have, other than like the budget, but in terms of spending money on, on this warrant.
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue, that is a problem, intersection for sure. So, yeah, that makes sense to me, any questions, concerns?
No, no.
Okay, and we have the Veterans Graves, I don't think anyone has any problems with that, right? $500. Continuing with Police Cruiser, so this is the Police Cruiser Lease Purchase Program. This is, and this one requires a two-thirds vote, I didn't know that, but yeah, we vote on this one every meeting?
Yep.
This one, amend general bylaw, Article 10, Personnel Classification Comp, okay, is this for the fire chief?
Yes. Fire chief is paid by, by bylaw.
Yeah.
And the bylaw wording, the bylaw wording was drafted at a time when there was only three steps within the CBA of the fire department, and so fire chief was paid 1.8. And so, fire chief was paid one point eight times the highest step at the time, which was step three, but it said step three. So now there's five steps and then the chief is here, he can speak to it, but now there's.
It's it's connected to just to step three. Yeah, it's just, yeah. That makes a lot of sense to me. And and honestly, it's probably a, it should have been written in the first place, connected to the higher step.
Well, it's kind of ironic, you you have a fire chief that can't climb the steps. Primary goal is to climb steps to a fire. Yeah, that's makes sense.
Yeah, okay. I have no issues with that, anybody?
No.
Alright, perfect. Alright, repair and restoration of monuments in various cemeteries um. So this is the cemetery commission would like to continue its recent program of restoring the older monuments, especially in some of the older cemeteries that do not have um. Perpetual care, and this is for five thousand dollars and it's coming from. Yeah, sorry, yes, obviously, that makes sense. Any issues with that?
No, no.
A lot of cemetery ones, then we got a transfer funds from the sale of cemetery lots for maintenance improvement, it's for three thou- thirty five hundred dollars. Any issue with that?
Sounds like the same thing.
Yeah, it's just.
You know, wouldn't wouldn't you sell those to fund the previous one? I don't know, I guess further explanation we needed down the road.
Yeah, Mike Mike can explain it to you.
I couldn't hear the questions or I can't.
Well, it just seems like we're selling, obviously, the two, they're both are related, right? To make sure we're maintaining the cemetery. One saying we're selling lots to maintain, right? And the other one's asking for money to maintain, or restore or repair, I guess the wording's different.
Yeah, I think that the, like, so this, that they are sold, right? Like throughout the year. And then it's just kind of freeing up that money to be used for maintenance, that's what that one is.
Right, and then there's cemeteries that don't have any. You know, they're just been around a long time and we're trying to repair stuff and take care of them at this point.
Two different cemetery, yeah. That makes sense, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. Alright, and then the scholars add to the scholarship fund to see if the town will vote and raise appropriate transfer from available funds, the sum of twenty two thousand dollars. To be added to the scholarship fund under the master general law, chapter third, chapter sixty, section three C. Any issues with this? So then we have some placeholders related to solar pilots. Waiting for the language, so we'll wait, you know. Uh next one is uh establish a community program revolving fund. Oh yeah, sorry, yeah, establish by law uh to change uh to charge fees for weights and measurement services, so this is. Gas stations, anyone or anyone who uses any kind of measurements, um we currently do not pass that expense on and we are um we. But we, it does have an expense to the town, so we're just changing the bylaw or establish a bylaw that passes on that expense. To some degree. I have no any issues with that?
No.
Alright, now establishing the community program revolving fund, so.
What's that?
We talked about this a couple of weeks. I don't know, we didn't talk about the amount of money.
Yeah, so it's looks like ten thousand dollars is what we wanna start revolving fund.
Doesn't have to be, I think that we kind of just threw a number in there.
This is kind of just uh so that when there's any kind of like the COA is doing a certain kind of event and they, you know. They're selling tickets to that event, they can get, you know, have just a kind of a bank of money, a bankroll to work with, right?
You know, pay upfront, right? They need a bus service to go somewhere, right?
I wanna make sure we understand it's gonna be for all programs, so there might be used, there may be, I don't know, there'd be. Um different things that come up under the program director's purview.
That makes sense. Any questions, concerns?
No.
The other two are just re- the next two are repeats, so I just I I gotta figure out which meeting they're gonna be on.
So now, should we vote on all these now? I mean, I think we went through them, we won't probably have to go through them in detail again, but should we vote on? I mean, I know there's be a lot of changes.
We just need you to vote that we can send them off to town council.
Alright.
And that you're okay with.
I'm okay with all of them, nothing really blew my mind.
Board that you're okay with.
You guys have any questions or concerns or any articles you wanna withhold from sending to council?
No. No, some language clarification, absolutely, explanations added to them down the road, but for right now, definitely send them over.
Alright, with that, I want to.
So we just want you to vote that you're okay with all of the articles, all the concepts of these articles and that it's okay to send them to town council.
Alright, yep, so I'll entertain a motion that we are okay with the concepts of the articles presented and to send these to town council.
Motion made.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes, alright. Um so this is. Yeah, I did that, I did ten, right?
You did nine, ten pretty much.
Okay, health insurance plan and rates for fiscal twenty twenty four. We don't have much control over this, do we?
Well, we went to the uni, you know, we went to the health insurance advisory committee to try to propose a different plan design. Um they voted not to recommend that. Um we also sent letters to the union saying we were interested in changing the plan design. I had a meeting, I presented. I presented it to whoever could come to listen to it, the the health insurance advisory committee was here and and I think. A good amount of the union presidents were here or the union representatives. And said, look, you know, we'd like to change the design, it's gonna be this beneficial to the town um. But you'll save money as well and we're offering the FSA and uh they. Two unions are okay with it or more receptive and two weren't um. And we are running out of time, so given the fact that I would have to renegotiate or negotiate with these unions. We are uh decided to just keep this current plan design that we have and these are the rates that that it is. And yeah, we don't have any choice at this point.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, we're gonna have to face this sooner or later?
Sooner or later, um obviously, um with the ballot question passing, it's a, I think you can breathe a little bit, but. Ultimately, this plan is extremely rich. In fact, even if we were to put it out for bid. Other providers of health insurance probably wouldn't even bid the plan that we currently have because they don't offer it, because it's so rich, right? Um I thought that my approach might be, I I I'm not sure what we'll do with the health insurance going forward.
I know Lake will just change theirs, right? I'd like to get maybe, you know, I can reach out to them, see how that's going.
Uh I think if we did anything, it would, we should start in the summer and we should negotiate with the unions. Because there Meyer is unique in that you can customize the health insurance any which way you want. Um so we could say this is our desired result. I think some of the changes, you know. Health insurance is such a personal thing, the way I use it is different than the way you use it because you, you know. I had one employee say, I'm never gonna, I I don't need, I never go to the doctors ever, so. For me, it doesn't matter, then you have those that go all the time, so I think we need to get them in a room and. Tweak it that works the best for the majority, if we're gonna change the plan and that way it'll be um they'll have some input.
Alright, alright, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the health insurance plan raised for fiscal twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Okay, we have the uh spending plan for the donations received for Earth Day.
So there's the spending based on the donations and most of the money is for t-shirts. And signs.
T-shirts and signs.
Pretty much.
Works for me, so there's a balance, small balance that we can roll over to it, something else.
It's in a, it's in a donation account.
Okay, perfect. Works for me.
Yeah. It's exciting that it was funded a hundred percent from donations. Even if it was small amount of money, it would have been worth it, but it's great that it was funded through that, so.
Alright, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the um spending plan for the donations received for Earth Day.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Moving on, gen item thirteen, we have road opening permit for uh from EverSource. For gas maintenance work on five Gray Oaks Drive in East Freetown, we have a map, right? Assuming this is the map is for here.
Looking for it, I don't see it on the map.
Was this map for this?
Okay, that's the bridge, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I saw a map somewhere here. Oh, I see the map here.
Yeah.
Alright, yep.
So that, yeah, this is just, um I spoke to Anthony Valu from EverSource, there was some confusion on this. Because we, the town was replacing a covert right there and and when they had uh when they were opening it up, they they. Um exposed the gas line, so EverSource went out, made sure it was fine, they closed it back up. But EverSource needs to do just regular maintenance, there's no issues with the gas line um. So uh they just, they just need this permit so that they can go ahead out and do that.
Alright, it's it's gonna be, well, did this already happen?
No, it didn't, we, so that's exactly what happened. We we said you can't do it until we go to the selectmen's meeting. And then we thought they had done it and I talked to them and they said, no, we hadn't done it, we went out there when they were opening, opening it up. Because of the, we had a covert that was failing or I mean a catch basin um and. Uh the the line got exposed and they wanted to make sure it wasn't broken or there wasn't any issues with it, so they were out there and it got covered up. But this is, this is now actually maintenance work that they now need to go out and change the line or whatever is that they're doing for maintenance on the gas line. So now, I I thought they had, but they have not.
Alright. Works for me. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to um. To approve the road opening permit for EverSource, from EverSource for gas maintenance work at five Gray Oaks Drive, East Freetown.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Okay, moving on, we have discussion of vote whether to support the application for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four grant round. For the ma- uh Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program Grant, didn't we talk about this already?
We we talked about it in the um. But there's a letter, I believe, that you need to sign.
I saw that. Alright, great. Is there anyone not wanna support?
That's great.
Alright, awesome. Okay, with that, so I'll entertain a motion to uh support the application for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Grant round for Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant Program Grant.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. That was a mouthful. I've been talking for about twelve hours. Give me no idea. Alright, moving on, so we have the gen item fifteen, right? Did I miss anything? That's good. Okay, so um this is. The consulting agreement between Town of Freetown and Apex Companies LLC for environmental consulting activities.
Yep, this is a Apex is a division of environmental partners who are used for engineering services. So this will be to start some um baseline testing up at, you know, over by Excel.
Okay.
So stuff we've been talking about for about a year now. Um and help us with some protocols and procedures.
Okay. It's thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consulting agreement between Town of Freetown and Apex Companies LLC for environmental consulting services.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Alright, and moving on, this is the, just to authorize Deb to for the agreement. So I'll entertain a motion to authorize interim town administrator uh to sign agreement from Apex Companies LLC for environmental consulting service uh activities.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. The only, only thing I was thinking about those is funding wise.
It's in the border health's budget, it's funded.
Yeah, I was saying like, we could use like, you know, the tipping fee, part of the settlement.
So we really can't, it goes into the general fund, but it sort of does, right? Like we put it in the general fund and then we allocate it into his budget. So it is, it is.
Yeah, we inflated his budget last year because of testing and.
We finally have gotten that underway, this is, this is be the start of that.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me. Alright, cool. Alright, now we have Town of Freetown and Architectural Consulting Group. Uh for OPM for the fire station renovation and addition product uh project, so this is the agreement.
Yep, this is to hire the OPM to start our.
Exciting news.
It is super exciting.
I know you guys went through a process to select that OPM and I'm sure that was pretty involved and.
Yeah, it was, but it was, we had some good candidates in front of us, huh? I mean, honestly.
Well, that's very, very exciting. It's nice when these things move along, are actually. Taking the right steps in the right directions to get done, it's exciting. Alright, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between um and addendum to agreement between the Town of Freetown and Architectural Consulting Group. For OPM uh for OPM for the fire station renovation slash addition project.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes, alright, and related, I will entertain a motion to approve the interim town administrator to sign the agreement and addendum to agreement between the Town of Freetown. And Architectural Consulting Group for OPM for the fire station renovation addition project.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Alright, so now we have the Tuesday Club uh for their use of the uh Village. Green Bandstand for the Annual Strawberry Festival on six eighteen twenty 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 three. Anyone have a concern for with this?
No, uh the only question I have, like, I know last year didn't have a police uh detail. Um do they, do we know if they already did that, reached out to police? Make sure there's someone there.
It says right in here, as always, we will have a police officer on duty for traffic and door and pedestrian crossing.
Perfect. Awesome. Good. Alright, awesome, so with that, um I'll entertain a motion to approve the Tuesday Club. Of a sonnet's use of the Village Green Bandstand for the Annual Strawberry Festival on six eighteen twenty twenty three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes, alright, now we have our map. So this is um gen item twenty, discussion of vote on whether to recommend full closure or phased construction. For Chase Road Bridge Project. Right.
Mast D O T is gonna uh work on that bridge uh overpass over on Route one forty. Uh you know, Chase Road. One forty.
So you have to go all the way around.
Yeah, so that's kind of why I'm looking at the map, they the, Luanne has more information, but I think if it's fully closed, it'll take them fifteen months. So it'll be closed for fifteen months. If you do a phase closing, it will be nineteen months. Or it's, you know. Yeah, that's why I. And just so you know, it's a sort of your opinion, you're, you you can ask them to do one way or another. Their mast D O T, they are reaching out to us and they have asked for the board's opinion. But at the end of the day, you don't necessarily have the control over this. And I thought it would be good if you guys weighed in and and gave your opinion because it is going to be a long term thing.
Hall either way, so an extra four months, I mean, you know, we have fire trucks that are trying to get over to. Say, the Quick Pick Plaza.
Right.
From Station Three.
Will the Gurnee Road Bridge? Will that Gurnee Road Bridge support all the extra traffic and your fire trucks?
That's gonna be my other thing is we have a a bridge. That's gonna be my other thing is we have a, a bridge that's very narrow and historic, that's not made to hold a lot of weight. Yeah, oh, I think they did that. There shouldn't be any weight issues, yeah, my bad.
That's amazing. Either way, though, I think what is my take on it is like, doing the partial closure, although, although technically, you know, they're expecting it longer. I think it like, and when, when they say partial closure, I mean like one-way direction?
I think so, that's what I think I would, one, they're gonna leave one lane open.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know, honestly, I don't know anything about like traffic patterns and my, my opinion is not very valid in this.
I just think that the amount of time when I think of police and fire, right? To us, day to day isn't a big deal to go around, but seconds count for them, right?
Right.
So, I think that just for that sole purpose alone, and there's many other valuable ones, but that's my number one, like. To have it open.
A partial, a partial.
Partial open, right? That they know they can still get through there.
Yeah. That's my, my, my gut says that too, I don't know.
It's one of those things, if we're, we're gonna vote on it and they're gonna do whatever they want, I think at this point, we just. Publical, publical, public awareness, so that they know it's coming and avoid the area if possible.
But I would hope that if they're reaching out to us to ask that they will at least value our input, I'm not saying that they're gonna hold it, but they're just saying, at least they might value our input, right?
Yeah, so night, so when does it start?
I don't have that information, you have that? I think they're just preparing right now, this is Mast D O T.
Might not start for years.
This is the engineer, I think. Yeah, I think it'll start because they're funded to do this project, so I think it'll get done, but it is probably a year away, I mean, I don't think it's anything that anybody needs to start. Um, panicking about, but I do think at the end of the day, I, 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 I do not like. The closed roads in town, it does cause um, issues. Uh, I think if it's partially closed and it's a nightmare to get through, most people will go an alternate route after the first couple of days, you know? Cause this is gonna be nineteen months, uh, but I do agree if there's ever that emergency or something comes up, you can at least get across there.
Okay, alright.
We may wanna also talk about pedestrian traffic, because I know there are quite a lot of people that walk across that bridge to go use the plazas and whatnot, so I'm not sure how that will be impacted.
Yeah, that's a long walk around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one thing by car, another thing by foot.
Partial closing, I'm not sure if that would mean that pedestrians could go across, I don't know if you would.
Walking through the construction zone. I wouldn't think, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think so.
I would just be concerned that they might try to go down on the highway and go across and come back up.
Either or and.
Yeah, they probably have a flagger there.
They wanna have a full closure, we'll work around it and, right?
Yeah. They're rather partial, right?
Rather have a, a lane open if I could, but I mean, it doesn't.
I think that's what, that's what we'll ask for.
And here's the other part, is you have certain pieces of apparatus that are over on the East Freetown side, right? So then that.
I think my. My biggest. Shortfall is getting from Station Two onto the high, onto tw- one forty to go south.
Oh, yeah.
That's adding, going all the way around the Gurn- the Gurney Road Block. To get on the highway to go to something south with an engine or, or that second ambulance is.
Yeah.
North, I have equipment on the, on both sides of the bridge, that going south is the only.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Didn't think of that.
Again, we'll, we'll overcome it if we have to.
We should put signs of no accidents on, go in that direction.
Alright, so that's all I'm trying to motion to recommend the phased construction uh for Chase uh Road Bridge Project.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, backup generator. So gen item twenty-one, discussion and vote whether to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and R.A. Mitchell Co. Inc. For the backup generator for the Chippeway Road Pump Station.
This is the project we've been working on to get the generator over there for the pump station, um. We got opera funds to do, do this and then I had to put it out for procurement and this, the procurement, Ari Mitchell was. Actually, the only bidder, but.
Okay. Alright, any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
And it's hard for money, perfect. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the group to the town of Freetown and R.A. Mitchell Co. Inc. For the backup generator for the Chippeway Road Pump Station.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, alright, now I'll kick it over to um personnel, which is still Selectman Loops. Thank you, thank you. Had a little moment, I had to figure that out.
Still me. Personnel Board, item agendas uh twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, all resignations. So as read, item twenty-two, accept the resignation of Brittany Normandin as senior librarian, effective four nineteen twenty twenty-three. Uh, item agenda twenty-three, accept the resignation of Donna M. Silva as van driver for the Council of Aging, effective three twenty-nine twenty twenty-three. And item agenda twenty-four, accept the resignation of Tracy Knowles as part-time senior clerk, effective four-four twenty twenty-three. Any discussions or concerns?
Nope.
Alright, and I entertain the motion to approve item, item agendas twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, as written.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Alright, item agenda twenty-five, discussion and vote whether to approve the memorandum of agreement, M O A, between the town of Freetown. And the Freetown Police Association.
Alright.
I think this is just to pay those police officers that are gonna work fourth of July and the third of July. Uh, the same rate as the out-of-town uh detail officers.
Yeah, we've done it.
Weird, yeah, we had it where you hit like a defer, like a differential rate or a lower rate.
I don't remember, we, we did this last year though, so we could get the details that we need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ahead of time.
Yeah, and we still had trouble, I think, last year, so.
Yeah, it was like five hours before we got the full list.
Yeah, that's, that's called made up.
It's perfect. Uh, any further discussion, questions, concerns? Alright, I entertain the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement. Between the town of Freetown and Freetown Police Association.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Item agenda twenty-six, discussion and vote whether to approve the following appointments. A, Aiden Flood and Lauren Goyette as seasonal parking control officers, effective five twelve twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-three. So these are, are returning from last year, last year, this was the first time they were hired or we had that position open and they're coming back for a second season, so.
It's, it's, so it's only to June, is that right?
Um.
They get reappointed as of seven month on the.
Okay, that makes sense. Alright, perfect, just wanna make sure there wasn't a typo. Alright, cool.
I entertain a motion to approve. Aiden Flood and Lauren Goyette, a seasonal parking control officers, effective five twelve twenty twenty-three through six thirty twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, now we sign?
You've got updates from the town administrator. I can't remember any. Can't remember anymore? Asked me to put it on there. I, I just can't remember.
Taking any more information today.
I'll think of them as you're signing if I have any.
I thought it was gonna be a quick meeting.
It was a good meeting, though.
Very informative, it's just, when you, when you read these things before you come over, right? Or when you're researching it. You just think it's gonna go a little faster than it is sometimes.
Hmm, yes. Are we all signing this one?
Yes.
I am so hungry. Might need to have uh, the res- snack recess going forward.
Cause it's on, it's double sided.
It's been effective.
I don't even know what she's seeing straight at the moment. That's so exciting.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, I'll take that fifty percent off the building.
I have to go ride my, my spin bike for a half an hour when I get home. I, I'm trying to do it every day in April. Ride for half an hour. It's a challenge I've. For some reason doing, and I didn't do it this morning, so.
Doesn't that stink?
So not looking forward to it. Yep.
You're all set.
Let's just get outside, I have a gym, I guess. Alright, all set, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
That's a wrap.
I don't like this pen.